At this time, I'd like to call the Chesterfield County Board of Education meeting on March 10th to order. If there are no objections, we will approve the agenda by consent. And at this time, I entertain a motion to go in executive session.
I move to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters pertaining to employee hiring, compensation, terminations, resignations, contractual and legal matters.
At this time, we will go into executive session. We'll be back in 30 minutes. (Audio cut off.)
All right. At this time, I entertain a motion to return to open session.
Sucking.
We have one public comment tonight, and I'll read our statements. The public participation section of the school board meeting is designed to hear comments from the public, but it's limited to thirty minutes so that normal business can be conducted. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to concerns and comments, but will not answer questions or debate issues. Each participant will be limited to five minutes and will refrain from making personal complaints about school personnel or board members. Tonight, we have Ms. Renee Tyson that would like to speak on zero tolerance.
I appreciate the opportunity to come, and so I'm gonna make this as quick as I can. First, this is a little intimidating for me. It's very intimidating, but I also have a duty to do it. I'm rejoicing in hope, hoping that at the end of this, we would have... Oh, he says speak in here, okay. Hoping that at the end of... Oh, Lord, I'm short. Hoping that at the end of this, that we could come together and we can see some common ground. Patient in tribulation in the fact that I have gone from one step to the other step, trying not to be out of order. And when I say going, and it's not a complaint, it's just the steps that I've taken. I first went to the principal, who is no longer with us. Then I went to the assistant principal, who was supposed to be over it. Then I went to Mr. King several times. I think Mr. King is probably tired of me. Then I went to the district superintendent. He didn't have time to talk to me. He sent me back to Mr. King, which I'm sure he's tired of talking to me by now. So, and I want to be constant in prayer, because I wouldn't want to speak to anything without consulting the one that's in charge first. So, I'm gonna read this, and try to make it real short. The question was asked, "How to Resolve Conflict Without Violence." That's a heavy question for my age. This is the question that was given to my granddaughter, who was put out of school for the rest of the year because she was into, in a fight. I've heard the term "zero tolerance," but I didn't really read the term in the handbook. I've been told many things. My mom says, "Don't start it, but don't let another person put their hands on you." My dad says, "We have a personal space, and I should not let the enemy get that close." My grandmother says, which is me, "If possible, walk away." The school offers me no choice, and just keep crying, "Zero tolerance." I wonder if it was their child being attacked, what they would do. I know that negotiation is possible when all parties are willing to negotiate. The court gave me a charge. They gave her third-degree battery, which means that she has to report to a parole officer, which means that she has to attend counseling. I want you to take my granddaughter out of this spot and put your child in it. The judge ordered me to counsel. I didn't understand how they could counsel me on anger management when I do not really have an anger issue. You see why this is puzzling, a puzzling question? I could go to the teacher, but I don't know if they will listen. I've had friends that were being bullied and just quit. I'm not a quitter. I will defend myself if I must. I would be not... It would be nice to think I could tell someone, and they would come to my aid, but I don't think so. I cannot allow them to hit me without a response, because that would be just the start of a lengthy list of trials. See, when you allow a bully to win, they not only win over you, but all the others that are afraid to defend themselves. I can't afford to be afraid. So, to answer your question, at my age is difficult. Maybe even when I'm older, it will still be difficult. I know school is important. I want to go back, but that's not likely this year. So, I guess I can walk away. I can tell and adieu, but I don't know if the violence intended for me will be avoided, unless we are all on the same page, and it's probably not going to work. So, the reason I'm here is because of zero tolerance. Because I've asked the question, is what in my granddaughter's record said that she was a danger to the school? Her record was good. They gave her a charge of third-degree battery. I looked that up. They said that you attack somebody with the intent of causing harm. And I'm sure that when kids get in a fight, there's probably gonna be a little harm. But I watched the video, and I couldn't tell who started the fight. My granddaughter said she was defending herself. I can't say she was, I can't say she wasn't. I can only say what she told me. The other child probably said she was defending herself. I can't say she was, I can't say she wasn't. I wasn't there. All I can say is that I don't think the school can prove intent. It wasn't on the video. I looked at the video. They also told me that if a child took a video of a fight, they would receive the same punishment. No other child was punished. I'm gonna, I'm trying to round it down. No other child was punished. My granddaughter was put out for the year. She's doing virtually. She's doing okay, but she lost a lot of stuff. I'll say stuff, because she wasn't able to go to basketball games. She wasn't able to go to football games. She wasn't able to participate. She wasn't even able to walk on the property. The child that she fought, and I'm gonna say this with much caution, she had an IEP. I work with kids. I have kids that have IEP. But I never, at any time, let them think that they could run over any child, and because they have an IEP, they could get away with it. Now, the book says that there's a certain punishment for a certain act, and it gives degrees. The same degree that my granddaughter got is the degree that the other child did too. The other child went back to school at the same, next week. My child was put out, my granddaughter was put out. So, what am I saying? Zero tolerance for who? And what does the school do to help children reach the point of zero tolerance? Is there mentorship? Is there a native class that we can take? Do we learn how to act? Do we learn how to deal and make relationships? That's what I'm asking. If you say that my granddaughter is a danger, prove to me that she is, and that she is, what are we as grownups, what are we as, as a society, gonna do? Do these things, you're gonna screw? That's easy, that's real easy. But wouldn't it be wonderful if we said we had this in place, we had that in place, that our children could come to us instead of running to the door saying, "Fight, fight, fight"? I'm not running to anybody, absolutely. I looked at the list that you had, and I know my five minutes is out. I'm looking at the list, and I'm serious. You got a long list. I don't even know how you keep up with that list. Well, you did, you hurt, you took over. So, I would like for them to think about it. You know, it may be for no reason, and we get one of the staff members say, "What I worry about, she's not coming back with you, doesn't matter. There's gonna always be another Amari and Noelle Tyson. There's gonna always be a child that's coming to come here." So, I'm not only here for Amari and Noelle Tyson. I'm here for them, kids, they're gonna come up, and they're gonna... And I know I'm sorry, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. There are no other comments. So, we'll now have a moment of silence. Please take a minute. And now, we will have Anthony Smith Cruz from New Heights come up and lead the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to welcome our 24-25 Teacher of the Year, Teacher Induction Class, sorry, the SRO Prize, Jane Pig with the link. Thank you, Ms. Pig. Administrators, principals, teachers, and area citizens for attending tonight. I know it's messy outside, so we all got a little damp coming in. Board members, you've been given the minutes for February the 10th prior to the meeting. If no, if I hear no objections, those will be approved by consent. Good? Thank you. Now, we're gonna turn the meeting over to our Coordinator of Testing and Accountability, Ms. Brune, for our special recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am pleased to recognize some of our outstanding students. Madam Chair and Dr. Anderson, if y'all would please come forward to present our students with their certificates. First, I would like to recognize two students from our district spelling bee. Each year, grades five through eight compete in classroom spelling bees. The winner from each of those classroom bees then compete at the school level against their peers. Then, the winner from each of the schools compete in the district spelling bee. This year, we had some amazing students competing, and now, we would like to recognize the runner-up and the winner from our district spelling bee. Our district spelling bee runner-up is Ms. Kate Wilson Colitz, fifth grader at Sherawta Intermediate. Our district spelling bee champion is Mr. Gus Snipes, eighth grader at Mackey High School. Let's give them another round of applause. Next, I will be recognizing our newest group of junior scholars. The South Carolina Junior Scholars Program was developed by South Carolina in 1986 to identify eighth-grade students with exceptional academic talent and to develop strategies for inclusion into special programs. The programs include a process for screening a potential talent pool of students, identifying and recognizing those students with exceptionally high scholastic achievement and intellectual ability, and sponsoring summer opportunities in collaboration with participating South Carolina colleagues, colleges, universities, and the Governor's School for Science and Math. To be identified as a junior scholar, students must score 550 or higher on the reading and writing subtests of the PSAT, or students can score 530 or higher on the math subtests of the PSAT in order to be recognized as a junior scholar. Students, as I call your name, please come forward and remain at the front until the last name is called. First, we have Ms. Harley Childers from Mackey High School. Next, Tyson Freeman, Long Middle School. Viva Lang, Long Middle School. Avery Moss, Chesterfield Ruby Middle School. Chaz Quick, Long Middle School. Alexis Redman, Chesterfield Ruby Middle School. Alexis Redman, Chesterfield Ruby Middle School. William Smith, Long Middle School. Anthony Smith Cruz, New Heights Middle School. Christian Taylor, Mackey High School. Madeline Wallace, Long Middle School. And Aiden Walls, Chesterfield Ruby Middle School. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you, guys.
Good job, y'all. All right. Mr. Kaski, you're up. Financial report.
Madam Chair, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Prior to this evening, you all received a copy of the financial review for the month of January. Is any questions related to that report?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Hazard. Next is our Human Resources Director with our Personnel Exhibits.
Dr. Anderson, Madam Chair, members of the board, at this time, I would like to recommend the following exhibits for your approval, Exhibits A through E.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Stubbs, for Curriculum Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Anderson, and members of the board. Several areas on our curriculum report that I would like to highlight. The first is our CTE program. On February 19th, Mackey High School's FFA students had the opportunity to speak with South Carolina representatives, Mr. Richie Yow and Mr. Cody Mitchell. They had the privilege of observing a date on a proposed bill, which was all about social media and age limits. This event is known as Legislature Appreciation Day. Chesterfield High hosted a job fair on February 13th, and students had the opportunity to engage with regional and local businesses to, to explore various career paths. They gained valuable insights as far as what employers were looking for with, with prospective candidates. Our special Ed, Special Track and Field Day is March 19th, with rain dates on March 21st and 27th. It will be held at Sherawalt High School. And the event will start with the Parade of Athletes at 9:30. Intercession Week for our elementary students went very well. Students had the opportunity to work with, in small groups, and have individualized instruction with their teachers. We had approximately 80 students that attended Intercession that week. Sherawalt Primary has received a grant to provide over 150 students with an STEAM experience, and this, of course, is science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And so, these students will be doing some virtual learning with Eternal Hospital and learning about various animals and their habitats throughout the state of South Carolina. This project was inspired by Ms. Kelly Wheeler, the art teacher at Sherawalt Primary School, and students will be able to visit the aquarium in Charleston. Sherawalt High's National Arts Honor Society created a sign for downtown Sherawalt, and that'll be hung very soon. Chesterfield High's Art Department is, has a photography class that is new this year, so students are very excited to have that opportunity. And then, the last thing I wanted to, to mention, of course, going back to the junior scholars, is that our ninth-grade junior scholars visited York Tech on February 7th. Students were shown different degree and career programs and got to meet other junior scholars from other districts and had a great time exploring the campus and programs that they may wish to look at when they graduate. Are there any questions about that, about the report?
No questions?
I just have one on the curriculum side. Do, do we have a policy in place that addresses academic dishonesty and the use of AI? And do we have AI checker in our schools?
So, there is, there is a policy with academic dishonesty. I don't think...
Dr. King, do we have a current in our handbook that addresses AI?
No, we do not.
We do not have an AI checker. The teachers can use it.
Not that I, no, no, I don't think so.
Please, probably want to adjust the policy for that too.
Yeah, that's, yeah. There, of course, have been a lot of, there's a lot of information out there that's, you know, very new with AI, so that certainly is something we need to look at.
I just know the colleges have it, and they have the free side of it, but I just...
Right. About that, about stu, okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions? The, the next thing is I would like to ask your approval for our new math curriculum for K through 8. We are requesting approval for I-Ready. And then, for our geometry at the eighth-grade level in all of our, our high school classes, we're asking approval for Savis. And these were the publishers that our, our teachers voted on and principals submitted their choices to Ms. Saul and Ms. Stubbs. So, we're asking for your approval for the new math curriculum.
I still move.
Thank you, before I call for the motion. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Any discussion on this?
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Anderson for his Superintendent's Report.
Talk a little louder. I can hear you. You, you, recently, you received the 2025-26 calendar that our employees voted on. That was actually Option 2 that our employees voted on, but we brought to you all's attention and want to move forward with the recommendation.
Dr. Anderson, that's the same schedule that we're, that we're presenting.
Modified.
Right. Modified schedule. I move that we accept the modified schedule for the 25-26 school year.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't know if you noticed it, but the whole week of Thanksgiving is, they're off. Yeah.
Yes, so that. But they got the days in, though.
They have the days in.
They got it all up there.
And they had the opportunity, they voted on three actual calendars. This is the winner. Okay.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Also, just a few announcements. This Friday marks the end of the nine weeks, March 14th. Also, Ms. Stubbs has already mentioned there's a special Track and Field Day at Sherawalt High School on March 19th that's coming up. And then, on March 20th, report cards will be going home or issued for our students. And then, on March 26th, we're having our Appreciation Breakfast. This semester will be for our maintenance department. We want to appreciate them. Just let them know how much we appreciate them. But please, board members, feel free to come out and join us on that morning of March 26th.
What time is that?
At 9:00, 9:00 a.m. In here.
In here.
Yes. Yes. Okay. We greatly appreciate that. Also, this is, this is some great news that I want to share. I wanted to save the best for last. Chesterfield County School District, as of last week, Mr. Kaski, we received a letter that came to me, came to our CFO, also came to our Madam Chair here, that our school district, school district is officially off of the fiscal watch list. Officially. Hand clap. Come on, y'all. All right? Officially off, so that's, that's, I'm really proud of the work that they've done to help us take the necessary steps to receive that letter on last week by, by the State Department. So, congratulations to all of them. Last piece of good news, and that is Dr. Hale and her team, they worked very hard diligently with our State Department on, obviously, you all know that we used all of our e-learning days due to inclement weather. And we also had to use, on January 23rd, we had to use a school closure day. So, we had to close school because we ran out of e-learning days. Based on the calendar now, based on the calendar for this year, the makeup day was April 18th. But Dr. Hale and State Department, they were working and collaborating together, and we will not have to use... Tell those new teachers, right? We, we will, we will not have to use April 18th. Instead, we're going to make up, use that makeup day. That makeup day will now be on May 22nd. May 22nd. Now, May 22nd on the calendar originally is a half-day, but that's going to be a regular day now. That's going to be a full day, and that will be our makeup day opposed to April 18th. So, congratulations. That's good news. Clap, clap, clap. I'm just, I'm just going to be honest with you. I didn't know how we were going to pull it together on April 18th. You know, we were worried about no, no students coming, but I was worried about no employees showing up, truth be told. So, but anyway, so our makeup day will be officially, again, May 22nd, a normal school day. Okay? Madam Chair, that concludes my...
All right. Thank you.
One comment, please.
Some good things out of that report. Yes, sir.
I, I just want to mention that, and to tell Dr. Anderson that he gave a great presentation at our Annual School Board Meeting. I got a lot of comments about it. And in fact, if you hadn't seen it on YouTube at O'Ree County, the chairperson brought that to the attention of his board about that presentation. So, I want to give you your, your thanks right now. I attended that session. I thought it went over very well.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The other thing that I wanted to mention, and Robert Till brought it up about the AI. Dalton County is, in my opinion, is ahead of the game in terms of AI. That presentation was very good. It might be something that we can kind of complicate or look at that address AI in our school system.
For sure.
I did another workshop I attended with Mr. Casey. They says that if at all possible, board members should not bother our CFO because y'all have so many reports that y'all have to fill out from the State Department. Says you all are overwhelmed with paperwork. But anyway, I'll, I'll narrow my request down. I'm just letting you know. Thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. All right. Board members, if you have not sent in your South Carolina economic, statement of economic interest you got till the 30th of this month, or it's $100 a day, right? Don't forget. All right. All right. Board members, April 9th will be SCASPA Day at the Capitol. If you want to attend, please let Becky know. All right. April 7th is our next regular board meeting here at 5:00. Executive session followed by a meeting at 5:30. Do I entertain a motion to adjourn? Gotcha. We are closed. Thank you for coming. Do it.